First, I'd just like to say, we should say who we all are. That's what we do at the beginning of meetings. Let's start with Pam.
Dana Parker.
Brooke Carter.
Jessica Giles.
John Oliver.
Victoria Romanoff.
Also, this is Tammy Morris. And we have representatives from the applicants, we also have MRB. We are being videotaped, yes, Lance?
Yes, very good.
You're being recorded, yes, Tammy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, our first item is the approval of minutes. But as you see, the minutes from October include some attachments that probably we want to read. I think it's not going to be a surprise, you've seen the documents before. But in the interest of all the people in the public who would like to make their comment, which is largely what this meeting is dedicated to, maybe we can just read these and approve them next meeting unless anyone suggests otherwise.
Okay. I have one thing, though, that confused me here. It says, "A motion by member Geiger to adjourn at 8:45 was seconded by member Romanoff." And then it says, "Chairman Geiger adjourned the meeting at 9:45."
Oh, sorry, that's...
It's true.
Oh, please, I'm not...
That's my shortcut key. Thanks, John.
It was sort of like code.
It's not simple, really, and I'll just say okay.
Sorry, thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Thanks. Okay. So, with the agenda in front of us for public comment and update from the applicant, comments from the board, then old business, new businesses, anyone want to add or delete from the agenda? That would be agenda item number three. Any additions or amendments to be done up this evening?
Yeah, a tiny one, but we can do that at a later time. It's Dorsey Hill who stops on this. We might be talking about three, four years now.
Cool, so maybe new slash old business. Okay.
Old business, yeah, let's just add a little bit of business there. It is a dangerous intersection, and a negative situation.
Right, especially when we're walking, happening. Yeah, yeah, okay, and sliding.
And we got some ideas how to solve.
Oh, great, okay. So then now, that brings us to largely, you can see, I don't know if you're, is there a copy of the agenda? Well, it was on the website. So you see that I started public comment at 7:15 with no presuming end, because we weren't sure how many people would come. And really, this is a chance. We've had something like nine or more elective, not required, public comment periods, but during the secret process, we didn't. And so recognizing that some people, while they enjoy writing comments, other people enjoy being verbal, so wanting to make sure you have a chance to hear your voice out loud in a room of your citizens. So, and for citizens, too. So to that end, also, though, I brought some Wabro College paper and extra champagne pens, if anyone does want to write comments that come up to them during this meeting, feel free to do that. You can fold it and leave it on the table, we'll collect it, make sure Tammy gets those, and we can all get copies of them. Because sometimes it happens, right? You favor something in a moment and don't want to go home and write an email. So, please do that. I don't think that I really need to mention that we're all, like, really working towards the benefit of our community together, that all of us are intelligent, forward-thinking, kind-hearted people with lots of important things to say. And to that end, it's a three-minute standard comment, and recognize that all of you have things you want to say. So anytime you go over, it's kind of really just being unfair to the next person who wants to speak. And I think that's that. We have really, again, nine elective public comment periods to great success, and so there's no reason to assume that it would be otherwise.
May I also add that we should just remain quiet in between speakers? That would be great.
Good. Anyone else want to add anything this time? Okay. So, we can do this by, did we do it, we didn't do the signup sheet for public comment? We did. Okay, so should we grab that, Tammy? And we can go down the list. Oh, so how about we leave a second one, and we'll start with the first, Jack, and then we can add to it? Does that sound good? Tom, do you want to, anybody else do you want to say? Okay. Do you want to either write that in or come on? Also, while we're being quiet, I think we'll just point out that we've got two updated versions of the site layout. So we have, so John Oliver put it upon himself to get them out, which is great. And he broke on the side here to under that, left, right, or east, that sign there, is Plan One. So that was the original conceptual, right, before it was officially submitted. And then we have the modern generation, the contemporary one, over there, just as sort of a reference point, as we've also recently moved. So thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Great. And do you have a tiny piece?
Hi. Jeff, 56 South Street. And I'll leave a lot of the variances and zoning and all that other fun stuff to the rest of people to comment. My specific comment right here, which I think is very important to what's going on, is that way back in the beginning, early 2017, late 2016, in public commentary, we were told as citizens and property tax owners of this village that there would be fair compensation from the developers' group to reimburse the village for expenses spent. So here we are, after I even said things about the cart before the horse, and said it was good that the village gave money for things like the economic impact study I quoted earlier this year, that was putting the cart way before the horse, we're spending that kind of money, the taxpayers' dollars, on something before we had not gone hard enough down the process to be spending that kind of money. So here is the question, as we go to the end of 2018, and there was a conversation about some work, working legal issues about having money be released by the developers back to the village, and knowing that we've been spending more money on legal, on police officers, on MRB, on the economic impact study, where is the status of that transfer of funds to our village? Do we have a status of when? Do we have a status of how we can evaluate both? How much has been spent to this point? Not worrying about the projections of next. We know that a lot has been spent to this point, okay? So will our village people and property taxpayers like myself, who are paying into this, be told specifically what has been spent and what is the target date for payments? Or payments that have been put forth by the developer to fulfill that promise that was given many, many, many months ago, and should have had some money already been transferred earlier in this process? I would say very early in 2018, and not have me stand here asking this question in late of 2018. That is what we want to know, and I think it's very important that we feel very disrespected by all as the citizens of this village and property taxpayers. If you don't have those answers, one, right now, or two, have them damn quick and money moved by the end of the year, okay? There needs to be money in the bank, in this village, by the end of the year. We've been paying our taxes on time, taking care of it, fronting all this information, and doing all these things in the respect that we were told upfront that there would be compensation from the developer, and that that is not in process, we're not deeply in process. That's a serious, serious problem that will create a lot more agony, disgust, upsetness, and frustration with property owners like myself.
Definitely. I will let you know that it is in progress. But to that end, Tammy, I'm not actually sure how that gets announced to the public. But how, what, do you, can you answer that? Is there a process of when those things become?
The developers' agreement is, I know it's in process, it's been through the attorneys. I'm not sure, has it been forwarded to, it has been forwarded to INHS, and that's where it is.
So, but when, does it get, like, when it's completed, does that get posted somewhere? Like, how would Jeff be able to see for them that it's not?
He could absolutely ask the question. The village board is going to be, would be more responsible for, is responsible for that developers' agreement. So, I don't see any reason, I mean, it's certainly public information, there's no reason...
It will be public information?
It absolutely will, and is.
Okay, so when and where is that information? Also, do we have an accounting through even, say, July or the third quarter? Is there an open vision of what's been said, say, through the third quarter, 2018?
So I, I don't look forward to any...
From the beginning of this process, of that whole project?
So, that's, so it's a village, it's a village board trustee thing to get that invoice solidified, so there is an invoice with a couple questions of some things getting moved in, so it is definitely in progress? When it's resolved?
Yeah, it's going to INHS and the payment, I'm not sure what the process is for them to pay their invoices, but I assume that...
Let me also take it upon myself to follow up with the village trustees and say, how does this information get posted? Is it two weeks old, and then posted, or?
Would it be to not have anything happen?
Yeah, and we'd like to know.
In 2018, when this process and our expenditures started way, way before.
Yeah, as a businesswoman, I get it, for sure. And there's fiscal year, sorry, when I hit the side point, Tammy, the fiscal year for the village, December 31st. But still, the point is, is still very great, and so let's look into that, for sure. Thank you. Terry, oh, Terry.
I'm a maybe, but I'll go ahead and just, mine's just going to be brief, Terry, 21 prospects, brief, Terry Cabello. I'm just going to touch on the road, very briefly. I mean, it's really a no-brainer. This has been on that sheet since the beginning, you told them to move the road from day one. INHS has shown us no respect for moving that road. They know they don't have the, they, I'm not even going to the laws, but breaking, putting it there. The point is, that road, they've known to move it. You, as a planning board, have asked them numerous times at these meetings, we've told you, specifically tell them, "We don't like that road placement." Yet, there it still sits. So they're disrespecting you, us citizens, the whole board, the whole process, by not doing a simple thing, is moving that road, which has been asked numerous times and is causing a lot of distress in this village, and to people who are on top of that. And they've offered money to homeowners. They know they're wrong. So they need to step up, admit it, and move, and make their mistake correct. End of story.
So just to clarify...
They don't have the road, that's the question.
You're talking, well, no, you're talking about the road on South Street.
I'm talking about South Street.
As it is on the...
And if they don't have both entrances, they don't have a project. And you all can still say...
Just for the cameras, just making sure.
And you all can still say no. You all seem fit. And you say there's a limit for this project. That's not our problem, that's their problem, they've invested. We as a village, you can say no.
Yeah, I think, not that I'm necessarily going to comment on every single comment, because then I take up time, too, but I think you're about to see some really great road questions come up as part of preliminary site check. So, really great that you're saying that now, for sure. Thank you. Okay.
Next is Phil Connor.
And folks, you don't have to state your address if you choose not to.
46 South Street, I'll sit.
Oh, sure.
Can you all see that?
Maybe turn that around.
Can you see that?
Yeah, yeah, turn it around.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a, oh, thanks.
Okay.
Start again.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I did go to the last working session, I must say I was a little disappointed that the discussion really didn't focus on what the public and their letters through the last 18 months or so have been. But I think more to the point, what we've been missing all along is just talking about the law. It's not about what we like, what we prefer, or there's nothing in the law about the traffic study and its impacts, it's the rules of our village, and they're pretty straightforward. I'm going to focus on three of them. First one is, the dimension from Schoolhouse Lane to their proposed road is less than 500 feet. It's in the village ordinance, and you can see down here, you have copies of it, that is a minimum requirement. They don't meet it, plain and simple. Second, South Street is a collector's street. Now, there may be some question about how one defines it. Their own experienced traffic engineer at a public meeting said, "South Street is a collector's street." And he said that with his 38 or some odd years of experience. I'm not a traffic engineer, those are his words. People talk about, you know, grassroots zoning time, South Street is busy. Here's a photo taken April of this year. People who don't live here don't know what South Street looks like. I live there. Here's a picture on the middle of the afternoon of the South Street. You don't see this on the traffic study. This road is supposed to be 40 feet wide by definition of village law. No interpretation that that's the law, it is 20 feet. For those of you who don't know, emergency vehicles in our village, these guys probably know, have to drive down this road here to get their gas. It's your fire trucks, your ambulances. If they're down there getting some gas and something happens, and they got to come out that road, guess what? Now, and all the buses go in there, too, in the school district. Every single one of them goes in that road. Something happens, they're not getting out of there. You've got to figure them on having a heart attack, and that ambulance has got to get out of that road. So I'll just finish by saying, they're only going to steer you to the answer that you want. I worked for 28 years of my career working for the largest multi-residential builder in the country. I know that, that's what they're going to steer you to. That's why the public's comments are so important, because they're concerned about what's happening to our village. Not somebody in Rochester, not somebody in Ithaca, we're the ones here, living here, and have already invested here. And it's important to us that our laws are followed, without any subjective thought. And I think we're really going to have the MRB go through every single one of these comments from the public, and comb through them, and answer them. I've asked for that since April of, I think, last year. If this board doesn't have time to do it, let's have the MRB do it. Thank you very much.
Wait, I'm sorry, Bill, can you just briefly explain the documents that you put in front of us?
So these are the ones that you may only see before. Sort of, I've seen that.
The correspondence, okay, I'm like, the blue box is...
So, obviously, yeah, so, I'll just, just accept it. So, things that are in black are straight cut, case out of the law. All right? And the ones in blue are just my little...
Your comments.
My little...
Great, okay, okay.
All right, the only thing I did different, just so you're aware, is the first one is, it talks about the actual introduction to the village zoning law, and then it talks about conserving property values in all areas that you're involved with. That is mine.
Okay, so otherwise, it's not a hard copy of what you submitted?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Kumper?
Kathy Kumper, 31 Wood Street. I understood that the planning board was looking for specific comments on the site plan for 46 South Street at this meeting. While I'm in favor of the project overall, I would like to make a suggestion regarding a plan specifically for the single-family houses, duplexes, and triplexes. The current zoning ordinance of 2012, on page five, requires a front yard with a minimum depth of 50 feet. This works well for the Tamarack Larchmont development and other more recently developed areas, but not so well in more dense neighborhoods such as Wake Street and Elm Street. I believe that this regulation is not appropriate for a dense development like 46 South Street. INHS has done a good job of providing porches for the houses, but a 50-foot setback doesn't promote the spirit of community and neighborliness. When porches are closer to the sidewalk, people get to know one another better. Examples of such close neighborhoods are Wake Street, Larchmont South Street, Yuka Street, and Conra Street, and lots of other streets. Deep setbacks will also result in long driveways. I would much prefer to see reduced street parking with shorter, perhaps, shared driveways and parking behind the houses. This would enhance the streetscape, that is, less on-street parking, and it should reduce the amount of paved area. Therefore, I strongly suggest that INHS explore the possibility of a variance in order to reduce the setback requirement for front yards. And I would like to thank the planning board for its diligence in following established procedures for reviewing this project.
Thank you. And Kathy, I think you submitted that letter...
I did.
Thank you. Okay.
Sigrid Powen is a lady.
Oh, these are also just people that signed in?
Yeah, they just signed in, so I could have checked this. So Sigrid Powen is a lady, and Mr. Pepe.
Sigrid, did you want to speak?
No, I'm not right now. Phil said what I had prepared.
Okay.
Sorry.
And then, did you say that?
Tom Pepe.
Oh, Tom, would you like to speak?
Well, I would like to, but...
Oh, would you please?
Turn it with the Ricky stuff. Tom Pepe, Pennsylvania. I'm going to skip to the end of this, because, like Bill, I'm concerned with where Ricky stated following the laws of the village, because while their laws, their laws are meant to be followed. I believe that the size and scope of this project, along with these and other environmental issues, are substantial and require more study and should be measured against the thresholds defined in the village environmental quality review, which, to my knowledge, has not yet been done. I also believe that in their evaluation of any such project, it should be the goal of truth in various boards and agencies to have that project comply with the existing village's laws, ordinances, the comprehensive plan objectives, without the need for variances, exceptions, special use permits, or other accommodations. If after extensive review, a variance or exception is determined to be worthwhile, then it should provide at least as much benefit to the village as it does to the requestor. It's kind of, I didn't get to the conclusion last time, so I'll go to the beginning. I'm writing this to express my concerns regarding the ongoing proliferation of the 46 South Street development project, which began, at least in my experience, and is only born of confusion in the May of 2016, which I attended. And that means the newer the property lacking the adequate right-of-way access of 50 feet to the property as defined in the village zoning ordinance, and question variance of 1.5 feet, too loud for that access. I and other attendees at that meeting don't recall any presentation or discussion of what was to be developed on that side of that meeting, and I believe there is no mention of a discussion or presentation of that type on the public record of that meeting either. However, after the variance was granted in the meeting, the chairman laid out a plan or laid out on one of the picnic tables outside the village hall, which depicted a neighborhood of 12 to 20 smaller, single-family, perhaps, duplex or two, one-story, low-cost homes, all very much in character with the surrounding neighborhood, which he stated were designed for seniors wishing to downsize their first-time home fires. Best call of the year in May 2017, and a 97-unit development composed mostly of rental apartments and rental homes, was presented to the village in place of the development presented in May 2016, and eventually modified to the 73-division proposal that is before unanimous. Information gathered over the intervening 18 months or so has revealed some very serious issues regarding the viability of this property for the current level of scope of development proposed. Perhaps this is why that property has never been developed in this manner. Some issues include inadequate road width to enter or exit the site, the road connecting Pennsylvania Avenue will pass within a few feet of a residence house, the proposed private road on South Street will pass within a few feet of the residence ranch-style house building. Inadequate turning radius for trucks, buses, fire engines, construction vehicles, delivery vehicles. Construction schedule, at least five and up to 10 years according to some sources, and the construction of market-grade for sale units and subsidized units not proceeding on the same schedule. Economic viability of this project pertaining to increasing tax base and the possibility of increased taxes to support this development. The May 2016 Pennsylvania Avenue zoning variance, which was granted by the zoning board of Fields, but as I understand it, the project is designated a major subdivision, and it should follow the planning board. There are other environmental issues which I've kind of addressed.
And Tom, I think you also submitted this electronically?
I have not submitted this, but I have a paper copy.
Great, Tammy, can you send it?
I only want to...
Oh, do I need to send it?
Oh, I'll do it.
You've got it. Okay, that's, that's fine, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another list? Somebody's got my clipboard, I was super anticipating, somebody. Anybody? I think you can address it, I think you just want to say, just now. I think you're, oh, I think she's doing the chairs.
Some chairs.
There are chairs, maybe he's concerned, but our press and Tom consent. Jack? Jack, did you want to add your names, Sarah?
No, it's on there.
Oh, it's great, okay, Jack, I think is next. You are, are you ready? He wants to.
Anyway, I submitted a similar kind of letter to the planning board during the secret process, but this has as much or more to do with the site plan than that even. So, it has to do with soil samples and water tables. INHS employed Empire Geo-Engineering in Portland to perform these tests, and they did it in June of 2017. June is traditionally a drier month than many, but all the soil samples were performed under buildings and roadways. They were laid out by Phil Bridge, they made the decision on where to bore, and every one of them was under a roadway or a building. Now, that was under the old submission before this new circular drive and the new entryway was proposed, and there are no soil samples or water levels performed under the buildings that will be there now. These roadways, the buildings, there may be a few that coincide or overlap if you put your overlay on a map, but generally, not so. Now, Empire also said that if there were any changes in the plans, they should be informed, and that might change their conclusions about the viability of building on the sites that have been chosen. Now, the MRB engineer said, in, I think, a meeting where the Part Two of the CQ was being discussed, that he did not feel comfortable estimating the percentage of the property that had a 0 to 5-foot water table. And he was asked, basically, 5 and 15%, did not feel comfortable making that estimation, because the facts of the testing were not there. And, let's see. The 40-unit building that is proposed now had previously been in the site of a water retention, retention area. I don't know how that jives with the construction of a slab-on-grade building, but I would think you would have to really build that up first, digging out the, the over there, and then the subsoil in order to build it up to build in that particular spot.
I think I also just want to say thank you, and as I sort of mentioned to Terry, that road questions will come, I think that you now may have just added some good soil sample questions to come, so thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, everyone's actually next.
Yep, you are, sorry.
Sorry, Sarah.
Let's share a light one first, I don't care.
You can write such a paper for it. Sorry about that.
Okay, I sent a letter to the board about a month ago, and I brought up five issues. I'm going to quickly go through them. First of all, we've heard that Hamilton Square will not have a negative effect on property values surrounding village houses. I found that to be false during my field campaign for village trustee, I asked a real estate agent with eight to 10 years of Truensburg experience to assess the effect of a 40-unit complex on surrounding property values. The result was a reduction of between 555,000 to 1.2 million in estimated property tax reduction within, depending upon the size and the complexity of the complex. Secondly, we've heard that Hamilton Square will not impact the value of existing rental property in Truensburg. That's also not true. According to the agents, there will be, will be an effect, particularly in our downtown district Main Street area, it was listed as increased vacancies, stagnating, and declining rents, and that property values of rental property would decline by 2% to 5%. Third, I point out, we've heard that there's strong demand for affordable rental housing in Truensburg, yet over the course of this past summer and this fall, we've seen up at Country Estates and along Main Street for rent signs, so we know that there are vacancies within Truensburg. What we found out is that, basically, most people who are in the need of affordable housing want to be near Ithaca, because that's where jobs are located, and there's consistent access to public transportation. Fourth, Hamilton Square will not bring traffic noise or crime to Truensburg. We've already heard about the traffic from Mr. Connor, so I'll go on to the crime situation. I have a friend who's a police officer in Ithaca, and he's sort of informed me of situations that have occurred at the Overlook. We've heard of drug addicts who have broken into cars both at the Overlook and... We've heard of drug addicts who have broken into cars both at the Overlook and at the hospital. We've heard of resident-to-resident confrontations there, also a number of noise complaints. We've also, he also mentioned that Ithaca, the O C U Takus County and Portland Sheriff's Department have determined that the low-income housing complex in Dryden has been a source of illicit drug distribution to Dryden High School students and TC three students. Fifth, and last, Hamilton Square will add to our Truensburg tax base. Well, we found that that's probably not true either, because now the new police chief has already told us that we're going to have to hire a new police officer. That's a seventy thousand dollar expense plus twenty thousand dollars for benefits. I think by the time that we assess what type of services we need to provide here, that it's going to be a deficit situation where Truensburg taxpayers will be asked to make up the deficit. I urge the board to review this and look for a smaller rental situation and additional revenue in single-family homes.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, not Sarah's turn.
That was Sarah Adams for Ball Street. I guess I'd like some clarification on kind of the process, because it's unclear to me quite why the planning board has sort of gone to site plan review, when it seems like they really need to be considering subdivision before site plan review. There's a number of outstanding zoning issues from just the basic density that's being proposed, and I remember making comments a year ago, and I was assured that there would be a baseline density analysis done of what, under normal circumstances, the site would allow, and that has not been done. The affordability credits being applied to all of the lots, not just the affordable lots. There's the whole issue of the roads, the access, the front yard parking. A number of issues that seem to me need to be resolved either through planning board's determination, assessment, and subdivision before you get to site plan, because you can't, I mean, site plan doesn't deal with those issues. So, that's a question I would like some clarification on. I would encourage the planning board to reread sort of the preamble to subdivision, to be reminded of what's involved with subdivision, and it is to be looking at the community as a whole, not just this project, and the layout of the roads and how the roads are going to work, not just for this project. There's been no internal analysis of the roads for this project that I'm aware of. So it seems like there's a lot of work that needs to be done before you get into site plan. The other part, MRB has issued two separate lists, I think of over two hundred comments of the applicants submitted. One was back in, I think, February, and then one was in March, and there were over, as I said, over a hundred comments, and some were small and some were not. And then the applicant responded to those MRB comments, and over half of the responses from those comments were saying, we'll do that for final site plan. And my understanding is that you cannot leave a lot of substantive issues for final site plan, that they need to be done during preliminary. So, I would sort of like to know if MRB would be willing, unable, to come back now, going through all those lists, and give us another go-around, basically, of the applicant's response to your first list, because I think that's important. There's a lot of substantive unanswered or unresolved issues, it seems to me, in those lists. So that's really a suggestion. Thank you.
So I think since I often get tired of hearing my own voice, believe it or not, this is a good segue for Lance to be able to sort of discuss what the, this preliminary site plan review, how that relates to subdivision, and then that there are some questions answered and some outstanding. I know we're slated to have an update from the applicant, actually being inside their minds, thankfully, I don't know if they're intending to, but probably are, but let's have Lance sort of see if he can sum up some of Sarah's really good questions.
So, for right now, we're basically, we just completed over a year-long SECRE environmental review of the application, which took a look at the whole project in its entirety. This board, staff, applicant evaluated those potential impacts and came to a determination of not significance, and I think it was last four. So now, the next step is a preliminary review of both of the subdivision and the site plan. They run parallel, but you're correct, they cannot approve one without doing subdivision first. So typically, they run those simultaneously at the same time, because when you're looking at subdivision, you gotta look at the data that's part of that subdivision. So they're basically doing a collaborative review now, but they can't approve one without doing subdivision first. To answer your question in terms of our review, we've actually had three comment letters. Our latest and greatest one was dated in August, where we identified, at least in this comment letter, those comments which were, some of them were final related and some of them preliminary. We summed up in our August letter those that we thought were more important to address now as part of our preliminary review. There's some technical stuff as it relates to pipe location here or pipe location there, water main under the road or water main outside of the right-of-way, that we kind of left it up to. We need a little more dialogue with the DPW superintendent to make sure where his take is on it. The roadway profile, you know, there's a thickness that they're obligated to make and meet, which they will, but whether or not there's a curb or no curb, those kind of dialogues, we kind of push some of that stuff off until final, so that we can get through the alignment of the buildings, the amount of the curvy surface associated with the project, where do we need sidewalks, where don't we need sidewalks? Do we need parking here? Can we do landbait parking, where it's green for now, but then at the time of need, it may turn into an actual hard surface later on, if ever needed? Lighting locations, et cetera. But some of the fine tuning will take place as part of final, but you're correct, the preliminary subdivision typically comes first, and then usually around the same time, we have site plan component as part of that.
I think you did, yeah. And then I think that, right, so, let's also see, I just really, really want to make sure that there's no one else in the audience that would like to make verbal comment, because I really anticipated so much at the time. And it's okay if you don't, but I want to see if anything's... Oh, that lady came in.
Oh, come on. I was just gonna, you didn't mention the road width. You mentioned the depth.
Yep. No, the road... Yeah, so a village road has to meet the minimum requirements internally, where everywhere they're proposing a village road, where, whether they have a variance...
Internally.
Internally, everywhere. Everywhere where there's a village road that's being proposed as part of this project...
What about the road, the road up to it?
Right, we'll ask those questions, absolutely, that Terry...
That's all part of the review.
He just had on his mind specifically one of the bullet points of what's the depth, and was referring to the letters that they had. Terry, did you want to just...
I just wanted to mention a couple more things. I think the reason why there's not a lot of comments is because we've written probably a thousand letters to you all for the last three years, since two thousand, well, definitely since two thousand seventeen. I mean, I wish I was being facetious, but I'm not, there are probably a thousand letters that you all have thought, so these are the points that have been driven home over and over and over and over and over again.
Yeah.
So I think that's why we're just kind of at the point where we feel like we're being led by whatever their attorney or they have on their agenda. I think also some people should be aware that these, I like this guarantee, that, first off, we don't need rentals, we know that, we have fact-based of that, but these homes, market-grade homes, I'd like to know how long that's gonna happen, because I'm pretty sure I would no sooner pay market rate to sit and look at a parking lot in a big apartment lot, and park some flight and rent. And these people don't own those homes. They may own the homes, but they have to get permission from I N H S to sell them. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that are really pretty over here that are facts. So I think they should really make sure the public is aware, if you buy one of these market-grade homes, that's great, it's your home. You buy in Mercury Valley, you're not gonna get a ton out of it. You put a pool in, you put something up there, you sell it back in Mercury Valley, and you have to ask I N H S for permission to sell it, because they own the land it's on. So I mean, there's just a lot of little things.
I think you keep raising things that are now on the list, I think we want to check them, so that we just want some good...
So I mean, I just, I think that's why I used to explain why there's probably not a lot of comments, and I feel like we have commented a bajillion times over on all these facts to you all, and we've brought them up, and I think you must be aware of them, and I guess from here on out, we're in our, we're in hope that you all have listened.
Yeah.
And that you come forward and that you still can say no to this project. You are aware. I don't care if they have two million in, that is their problem. That is not the village of Truensburg's problem. They started this project with twelve to fifteen homes, originally, as Tom Puppi said, at a picnic table meeting. We're gonna put twelve to fifteen market-grade, you know, four of them in there. Six months later, it's ninety homes and building rooms and, you know, it's spent a lot of cheap and vocal derisals.
Okay, okay, fine.
So, thank you, Sarah.
One of the topics that I don't think, I expected Neil to be here to talk about, the whole drainage issue. You know, there's no real baseline currently of what the stormwater, we don't, first of all, know where our stormwater goes. We do know, actually, a lot of it ends up in the sewer treatment plant where it doesn't flow on. But I've become more and more aware of the fact that, you know, everybody along South Street has sump pumps running, and in the last year and a half that this project's been discussed, we all know we've had significantly higher rainfall, you know, erratic weather, to say the least. And there was a power outage a month or so ago down here on South Street that actually also affected the sewage treatment plant, which seems kind of strange, but people with sump pumps were manually having to try to keep up ahead of, it was pouring, ahead of all the water that was rushing in. It just seems like this is a very, very wet site. And the SECRE has just added a climate change addition to the SECRE review, it doesn't go into effect until January, you guys didn't even bring it up, but it has to do specifically with looking at flooding and the potential for flooding due to climate change and additional rainfall. So, you know, I know people have written a lot of letters, and it just, you know, it's just a very, very wet, poorly drained site in a part of the village that's very poorly drained.
So I think that with more transparency and process, and anyone who listens to the audio from the work session, our intention is to look at these categories in meetings and agendas, and get the really deep investigation, get the really clarified things, and so all, that's where we're gonna see a lot of those questions come up, some of us need more clarification on what ownership, actually, how that happens within that. So that's great, so thanks for adding that. And then, you know, I don't today, I mean, as a team, I don't think we said, okay, we want, we need to hear from the applicant first, we actually haven't had their update, and that'll help us see, okay, great, we need to dedicate a meeting to parking, we need to dedicate two meetings. So I think once we get that, that'll help us know, oh, wait, they really did see. So right now, you're just taking our gift bait, that we have listened and read all of your letters and have compiled it, and now we're getting into the time where we can really ask those questions. I see a hand back there, but I can't see a piece.
It was my name, my complaint. This is how Ford's reviewed the South Street extension. My comment is, and has my interest in this project, has always been the quality of affordable housing. I think the way this whole thing has played out pretty quickly, it was deserted, you're either for it or you're against it, you cannot discuss what affordable housing works like. I have spent most of my time reading articles about affordable housing all over the world, and I find this, I know there's no law to force you to come up with something good, but I find these, okay, one of the things I like about Truensburg is you don't know who has what. Okay, you can live here, you can be poor, you can be medium, you can be rich, it's a very nice mix, people are not classified by, oh, you know, you live here and there. I feel this proposal creates a very uninspired, segregated, in this time, not by color, but by financial considerations, and I think all these developments, even though I know that people need housing, but what is being offered is atrocious, and I've gone to all of them, and I've talked to people, and I know people that live and have to live in this housing, and they all just want to live. So, these are, you know, complaints. So my feeling about this thing, it's so poorly designed. People have come up with such better insights, greater ideas, not necessarily more expensive, but much more humane, and mine is so below acceptable level of what we give people that need help.
So, Sarah, if you ever find time to send an email to some of the sites that you've looked at, you know, across culturally of the style that you do like?
I have, my first letter ever to the board was a long article about a very successful development in Calhoun.
Oh, good, and I'll refer to that. So yes, there have been, not quite thousands, but a lot of letters, and I'm sorry, I forgot that, I will look for that, thank you.
Yes.
So I think it's like seven fifty, so let's maybe spend another ten minutes, nine minutes, and is there anyone, I see you great gentlemen, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Well, we can...
Gentlemen, I hear...
Okay, so that's, I mean, let's, I think the village, the village board has moved to saying we have twenty minutes, and you take up as much time, I think that I'm willing, unless my numbers say no, that we have nine minutes and we'll stop.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
But you don't need to time them for right now.
Okay, one minute's up.
No one?
Time first.
Oh, does anyone want to make sure you time for three minutes right now? Is that there? Okay, no, I appreciate that, Henry, thank you for distracting me from me. Okay, so nine minutes to go. Who's next? There's a hand over there, hi.
My name is Bill Hill. My wife and I own property immediately south of this proposed project. That was at the meeting that the variance was granted for a foot and a half, and I'd like to verify that we had a meeting around the picnic table, and nothing was ever proposed to the scale. And I even approached her because we thought, you know, we'd like to develop our, these property in maybe two houses, because it's so wet, there isn't any room for more, although it's one of the site plans, maps, had the water flowing off the property, stopped the property, like, I don't know, I don't know how to do that. But I'd just like to verify those kinds of, that's, I guess, what's transpired.
Thank you. Okay, so maybe one more comment, sir?
Yeah, my name's Steve Hunt from Marchmont Drive-In. The board had mentioned a little while ago about addressing parking issues when they came up, but my question to you is, what are the legality issues gonna be addressed about throughputs and things? I think they need to be addressed before any parking issues on-site need to be addressed.
So, yes, okay.
I just wanted to get some sense... The specifications of the road and all the town ordinances that are being questioned, I want to know when they're gonna be addressed before parking issues, because that's putting the car before the course, if we talk about parking issues, before the legalities are addressed.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, I guess I said, hey, Tom, you want to say some more?
I just wanted to add Pennsylvania Avenue to the sump pump club. I mean, back-up sump pump to the sump pump, I don't know how deep I can go, I can't go three bags outside of there. It's a mess over there even just now, without, you know, all the melting and snow and whatever, so, I just want...
Okay, okay, Jack, last comment?
One quick question. Now, do the variances and waivers, if they're incurred by this project, have to be approved before subdivision in order to, you know, continue on with the process? Do they need to be appealed or granted before the process starts?
So I can't answer that question, I'm not sure, if Lance can or if I can, when a variance comes in?
Well, the one variance that there was requested was granted, and that was granted a while ago, I'm not sure that that could be a key at this point in time.
No, but if there are new, I think it would be...
Typically, if there's variances that are being proposed, they typically do come, I've seen it both ways, but typically, the variance would come before the preliminary approvals would be granted.
Okay.
The reason is, is that one board doesn't want to step on the foot of another board.
But is there a way to determine what the variance may be before the process starts?
At this point, I'm not aware of a variance being proposed or being required.
Okay. Well, I would want, you know, go about.
I think when we assess the different plots, the different aspects of this project, so there are variants. There's parking, there's architecture, there's water mitigation, there's.
If there's a suggestion by this board or through comment or through project change, that would result in a need for a variance or the desire to obtain one, then that typically at that point in time we would defer, it makes it more sense for the applicant at that point in time too to go sought that variance prior to taking the time to continue to revisions upon revisions if they're just actually going to get denied or not.
Sarah, there's, Janice, Hannah, you haven't spoken yet, do you mind?
No, Janice, sorry. I have been kind of tracking what's been going on at the sewer treatment plant since the new one opened. It's got a million gallons per day, average gallons per day capacity. However, the DEC has permitted only two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. And three times within the year, monthly reports show that that has been exceeded. So an addition of another seventy-three units adding to the sewers may be a difficult thing. I was in a meeting where they asked MRB to try to come up with an increase in that permitting process. Rorden tells me that's in the process and may not be necessary. But I think it's something you need to keep in mind is DEC must have a reason for setting that limit.
So I actually explored that question myself as well because it was raised. And the answer that I got from the village was that the two hundred and fifty thousand gallons was based on the old facility, that they need to, they need to recognize that the facility has been improved and then upgrade the permitted amount and the wheels of state government moving. They just haven't done it. So that it isn't a question, like the capacity of the plant is there. DEC needs to come out and assess it and say, oh, you made an improvement. We now can grant you more. So that's what I got.
Correct, that's my understanding.
But yeah, that was a weird thing. Definitely investigated that. Yeah. Thank you.
I was going to say something else. Also, I continue to have concerns about drainage, of course, and traffic, as I've said from the very beginning. But another thing that I have included in the letter is the assessments for these affordable houses will be less than the four houses on my side of the block. So with that number of people requiring services, it was valuable that the homeowners in the village, because it's a very low assessment compared to regular homeless in front of it.
Thank you. So there's two minutes left of the eight o'clock. Sarah, did you still want, you had your hand up and then I see those, did you want to add anything in the two minutes or?
I was going to provide a update. I imagine the applicant isn't aware of this, but I know it's important to some of the planning board members, and that's trees. As we say here, it's so wet over there that we probably lost four sizable trees in the last two months over on that site. As we continue to talk.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just that wet over there.
Yeah. Okay. Hey, it worked. Sorry, Hannah. Hannah doesn't like it when I do things like that. I hate when you break the rules. I apologize, Hannah. Thank you.
You don't have to apologize. I was here for you.
Okay, so I think then we'll close that section. I lost my agenda. But next is the update from the applicant. You ready?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. That was great.
And we'll be back to Lance and company. Okay, well, thank you. Obviously, we appreciate the comments and we appreciate the feedback. I've done, I've been doing zoning work for about twenty-five years. I've seen a lot of controversial projects go through a process. And particularly when the process moves slow, people get frustrated because they feel like they're not being heard. So I would say every single comment we heard tonight, we've heard before, there's written comments on the record. And we, in fact, in the early days of the project, when the board was and the village MRB, everybody was evaluating whether the application was complete, we responded to an awful lot of these issues in writing. I know it gets lost over time. So just a refresher, we filed the preliminary site plan application and the subdivision application in December last year. So we're just about coming on a year. The board spent about three or four months evaluating whether the application was complete. It went to MRB, that's where they did their first comment letter. We made revisions to the project as a result of their comments. Once we kind of got to a point where there was comfort level that the application was complete, we started to move into the SEACR process. And that also took several months, very careful, thoughtful, detailed evaluation by the board. Again, Lance and I do this a lot, where he's on the municipal side, I'm on the developer's side. And most boards would have moved much more quickly. That's not a criticism, that's just an observation. Very careful, step-by-step process. That all makes sense, but it creates confusion sometimes and feeling like you're not being heard. It also, it creates this animosity, I think, and this distrust for the applicant because we're not addressing issues. So we heard quite clearly that the board has told us to move the road. We've completely ignored that. I just want to correct for the record, that's not correct. Okay? We haven't gotten to the site plan review process and the subdivision review process where you might direct us to move the road. We said from day one, we're happy to do whatever you think makes sense. We're still happy to do that. I know sometime in the next few months, we're going to have exhaustive analysis and discussion on that issue. You're going to ask us to tell us why we put it where we did. You're going to have a dialogue. People are going to comment, and you'll come to a decision. At this point, to my knowledge, everything we've ever been asked to do, we have done, and we will continue to do that. I could spend all night responding to various comments. I'm not going to do that. I will tell you on the legal side, the compliance side, the variance side, what variances do you need? We had a lengthy letter from an attorney for, I believe it was TB, the Truanceburg, they were the ones? Yep. Which raised a whole host of compliance issues. We responded in writing to those issues to the village attorney. He looked at that guy who's not here tonight, and I'm sure he will weigh in on this at the next meeting. But we responded in detail on every single issue. And to our knowledge, the legality of the proposal, the legality of the road widths, the density analysis, there is no density analysis that's been done. We did a very comprehensive density analysis. I know one person raised the issue of the bonus, the affordable housing bonus, and you can't apply it to all the lots. Again, just to correct misperception, I think I've said this at public meetings before, there is an affordable housing density bonus in the village of Truanceburg. We did a detailed chart showing the square footage of each lot and what would be allowed without the density bonus and what would be allowed with the density bonus. We, this project, is proposing to use the density bonus on one lot for one unit. And all of the units on that lot are affordable. So we could build under the code much, we haven't done that. But we've done the density analysis. It's in there.
Yeah, it's in there. And it shows.
It shows.
So Sarah, we can look for that. It's in one of these big things.
I think it's in the June, some middle. I think it's the June, some middle. June or July.
But we can find it.
I think the planning board needs to do their own, this is my point.
Oh, well, it's based on the code, like the density and the square footage.
Yeah, not everything comes just from the applicant, you know, face value. It's not that I don't trust them.
I understand.
But the planning board needs to do their own.
Right. And then I will say, that is why you have a lawyer, an experienced land use lawyer, by the way. Then you municipal lawyers are not. But your village attorney is very experienced on land usage issues and SEACR in particular. So you've got a lawyer for that. And absolutely, don't trust me, I get that. I get that a lot. But that's what the review is for. But I will say, there is a lot out there that says, planning board's job is to review the site plan and to review the subdivision map. It's not to determine compliance with the ZILAN code. And again, your lawyer will be involved in, to our knowledge, all legal issues have been addressed about the legality of the plan, and there are no variances required at this point going forward. We, as we get into the process, would like to perhaps discuss some variances. I think we heard some comments about the fifty-foot setback. Well, certainly a variance for that would relax and give more flexibility and eliminate some driveway length and some of the benefits that were raised. That would be worth discussing if the planning board likes. We'd also love to see a reduction in impervious surface for parking. We think your code requires a lot of parking. We provided what's required. We'd love to have a discussion about reducing that and perhaps that would trigger a variance possibility. So that's just where we're starting. But now, finally, after eleven months, I think we're at the point where we're going to get into the meeting. We're looking forward to it. I will tell you that we have answers to just about every issue that's been raised, at least answers that we think make sense. We may not have them off the top of our heads because some of this stuff was put together a long time ago. But if you want us, I guess, to the planning board, if there's any particular issue that's been raised that you feel we have not done an adequate job of responding to, please just let us know, and we will then respond. In writing, if that's helpful, what else? We're just very excited to be at this point where we're starting to embark on the detailed meat of the process. All right, so along those lines, we were going to make a presentation similar to this at the end of the last meeting, but it had gone along. Instead, we sent a letter. What that letter basically says is, there are a host of issues that came up during the SEACR review, the four or five months which was done in Part One, Part Two, Part Three, that you all said, we should discuss that in more detail during the site plan or subdivision review process. We tallied that list, we kept our notes. We provided that to you simply as a starting point because those are the big issues that have risen up. They include road design and access, parking and impervious surfaces, pedestrian circulation, stormwater management, construction over shallow groundwater, location and orientation of buildings, open space vegetation and landscaping, construction phasing and architecture and look of the buildings. Again, we intended this as a good starting point. It's things you've said you want to spend a lot of time on. We're ready for that. We brought everybody who needs to be here for that. We also thought there had been a lot of submittals, and it gets confusing as to what's the current plan. So we gave you the most updated plans, which the revisions to these plans, and it's, let me just, it's this one. The revisions from the previous version are pretty mighty. They're responding to Lance's March comment letter. So we responded to that, we made some additional changes, and that's where we stand. What I will say for our goal going forward, we do not, I don't want to stress this, we do not want to be in a place where every month we come in, you give us some ideas, we go back, we make changes, because every change we make has ripple effects. So if you decide you don't want the access road here, you want it up here, there are stormwater implications. And that's going to change design of your overall site or the things we're going to have to deal with. So our goal, because every change we make has a ripple effect, would be to run through, spend the next few months running through all the issues, get a comprehensive list of direction from the board. We would then make those changes, address Lance's last comment letter, which was whittling down. I will say, I know a lot of people, we've heard the criticism before about, we said we'd address that at final. Every single time I said we'd address something at final, I checked with Lance to make sure they were comfortable. That was a final issue. So we coordinated that process. So everything that needs to be addressed during preliminary has been responded to, and we will continue to have that back and forth. So that's kind of how we'd like to see the process. I know people say I'm driving this process. Believe me, if I were driving this process, we would be in a different place. We would, we would, we've tried very much to be responsive to how a board wants the process. First was a determination of completeness, then was the SEACR, and now we're getting into perfectly appropriate. But I do talk a lot because this is my job. I think that's what we want to say. We would, I mean, if we had time and want to start on some of the easier issues, we would love to. We understand water and road access are going to be long discussions, and maybe we kick off at those next month. But we'll leave that to you to tell us when and where you want to do things. But maybe there are probably some of the issues we have that we perhaps could start or the board met it since we last met, and if you have some things you'd like us to.
I think that definitely we have some things that are unreminded because we don't get together except in public. Like this is a chance for us to have that part of your here. So I think that we are prepared to raise some things, and maybe some of them aren't, right? So definitely we want to help with the road. Do you want to, do we want to table that entirely? Or do you want to hear what we've thought about so far just to add to your list of things to?
Well, I think if you've got feedback, we'll read it.
Just take it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's all making good use of everyone's time and money. Okay. So, so do you want to start, Hannah? Do you want to start with some, let's go around? Sometimes I start on that side. On this side?
Sure.
You can say no, you can kick me. Oh, the table's too long, you can't kick me. Too late.
No, I have a bunch of, I don't know. I sometimes kick myself because I think that a lot of the reason that you changed from this plan over here to this plan over here is because I said, we need a lot more vegetation all around the perimeter. And I still think that's great, you know? I think that screening is a really good thing. And I think that our neighbors that exist need to be protected as best as possible. But when this design came up, I felt kind of blindsided by the whole thing. It's radically different than the previous design and radically different than anything in the village. And this was, I felt like this was presented, and then we kind of quickly went into the SEACR. And I didn't feel like there was a good, I didn't feel like there was much time and space to examine this and really have a discussion about it in a big way. And I feel like I should have maybe had that discussion in a big way much earlier because we're very, you know, that's.
I think we're doing it now. I think that that's what felt strange about the process. So here we are.
So here we are.
Hannah, did you say?
I feel like this road, not the only, like, I don't like the current, you know, proposal of where the access is on South Street just because I think it's not appropriate for a neighbor. We need to protect the neighborhood. But I also, I just, I look at that and I think, like, where do you ever see a road that's so squirrely? Like, roads are supposed to be, like, they're usually straight. And I assume they're straight because it's easier to build them that way, but also because it's easier to drive on them. It's easier to navigate a straight road. And in my mind, I want the roads that I drive on and that are in this village to be as simple and straightforward as humanly possible because it's just the safest thing. Everybody knows where you're supposed to be going, you go straight. Everybody knows, like, when you go to cross the road, you look left, you look right. And like, if you see a car, you stop. But when there are these curves and there are entrances and exits all over the place, like, I worry about pedestrians crossing that road. I worry about cars coming in and out and moving around there. There's so much odd parking. Like, it just seems very confusing as a driver and as a pedestrian. And I hope that doesn't make me sound like, you know, I don't know how to walk around in this way. I don't know. I know that some people had problems with the original proposal because it was kind of boring. It wasn't creative. But personally, I'm not for that. Like, please, give us the boring. Like, I want, I want it to be boring. Like, our village is kind of boring. It's set out with grids. But that's great. I'm okay with grids. So that's what I have to say about road. And I wanted to also bring up, in this particular proposal, the trail and the woods here. I'm an avid hiker. I love trails, and I love the idea of trails. But I also grew up in the village and as a teenager, But I also grew up in the village, and as a teenager, knowing that there's like, some woods there that are poorly lit, and a trail that no one's going to be on, like, if you're asking for sneaky behavior, it's right there. So I just thought that was maybe worth pointing out. And then, as for Kathy Klumler's suggestion about the setbacks, and getting variance for the setbacks, I actually have been thinking about that previously, and I'm glad that you were thinking for bringing that up again, because I've kind of forgotten about it. But, I would love it if, as a board, you could discuss that. Because I think the setbacks that are in our current zoning are really silly in a lot of, in a lot of places, and don't make up a lot of sense. So, I'd kind of, yeah, I'd like to just kind of suggest that to both groups, and see, like, if we were to grant a variance for the setbacks, how would that change things? Would, would the weird parking that's along the road, like, the parking that's part of the road, the very, like, this stuff here? Rather than being driveways, the way that it's, it's like a parking lot, it feels incredibly institutional, and like, you're at a hospital, or like a, you know, retirement home, it doesn't feel like a community? If we were to grant some kind of setback, or be able to put the houses a little bit closer, if, you know, if the lot sizes could be reduced some, would we be able to address any of those issues? Maybe put parking behind houses, maybe condense the whole, you know, development a little bit, from that, you know, kind of perspective? I don't know. I feel like I could go on for a really long time. But that's a lot of information, those are some of the things that I was thinking about. I think I'll shut up now.
That's great, that's great. So I would, I also just, I think I just want to encourage that applicants hearing all of these comments, who wants clarification from those of us who are speaking, you should feel free to have a conversation, right? This is what this is.
Yeah, I think we'll come...
You don't have to, but...
Yeah, we're going to come back to some of that.
Yeah, but...
We threw a lot of stuff out, I think, for now.
Yes, I did.
It's just absorbed. We're certainly, I'm, I'm, yes.
He's taking all these freedoms. He's willing to be free to speak now.
Yeah, we can just do what you want to do, and I'll be right here next to you when you want to.
Okay. Rick, do feel free to speak about some of the things I didn't mind?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I can speak a little bit.
Thank you.
The, I think, yeah, it's to the issue of the original plan versus the new plan. I think Hannah's right, that, you know, it did, it was some fairly innocent comments that led to a pretty radical rethinking of the project on your part. So I do think there were a lot of things that were coming together there, and it may have been that what happened is, as we sort of raised questions about the sort of, you know, that looks like, it looks like, you know, just a standard, you know, suburban subdivision, isn't there, you know, isn't there a tendency of a little creative with this, you know, there's no clustering, there's no, you know, none of the sort of, you know, up-to-date thinking about design and housing and those kinds of things. And that probably got you thinking, right? And opportunity to address a road issue and those kind of things all came together, and what we got was a, you know, brand-new plan, which I actually liked, I liked the involvement. So I'm not like, Hannah, I don't want, I lived in something like that, you know? And a lot of people in this village lived in something that looked just like that. So, you know, the, so, I like, I like the new approach, the overall concept. I do think that the road out to South Street, you know, I don't really like it there, I like the sort of entrance way that was to the north before, but can see why that was done, and I think there were a bunch of factors, you know, that were probably involved. You know, by the same token, I don't think, you know, if you're, if you're the property owners, next to an obvious, you know, access point that was left there by the original owner who subdivided it, you've got to know that someone's going to go in there at some point. So, you know, I've gotten that past that, though. And I do think that, overall, it would be good, from my standpoint, is to look again at that larger, wider northern entrance. I liked the pedestrian accessway there, I thought that would be a great way for, you know, people to get to the school, get down, you know, and things like that from the original plan. And, you know, the path, the pathway, I think, I think a road could be put in, in that place, and still provide, you know, safe, attractive pedestrian access to the central part of the village, and school, and, you know, just all the activity that is already in that area, but, you know, there'll be ways to get to it. So that's, you know, my sense of the, of the road issue, and I can see why that's a very big one for you guys, and something where we do, we're now finally at the point where we can give you some, you know, serious feedback on that. But I think it should be looked at again. And I don't know if that would be, if we go back to something looking like that, or whether that can be incorporated in this sort of more organic feeling, you know, sort of denser arrangement. So that's my sense of that. And I think that's, you know, all I'm saying for now, you know, sort of focusing in on that issue.
Yeah, so the road, that access on South Street's definitely lodged on my mind, and I, I saw, you know, in the, one of the responses here was, right, if we move, move the road, I guess it was in the preliminary, it was in the actual application, save 40 trees by making it a pedestrian walkway, mulch path, moving into South Street. Okay. Get it? Okay, a whole host of other issues, so now let's, let's look back. So I am also definitely interested in exploring the viability of the north entrance, I think that to Hannah's end, more traffic is safety. So if it's a pedestrian walk in addition to a roadway, it's harder to hide when, when you have people using that space, right? It's the dark corners that no one, no one participates in, which is why walkability in general is so important in a village. And so, so that, I think you're going to answer all that, and I'm sure there's one have to be water mitigation changes that happen as a result of being in that land, though I am not. Andy, he's got that all on his head. So we'll hear about how that goes and that speech ripple effect. In terms of walkability, which is this notion of pedestrian circulation, I'd like to see a sidewalk on the Pennsylvania Avenue side. I recognize that our villages currently have sidewalks everywhere, because they're expensive. However, as a woman who likes to hike, but often only has time to walk in her village, and does it daily for 20 minutes if I'm lucky, I'm on Pennsylvania all the time, I'm on Elm, and so I know it's equipped to the downtown, so if we're talking about students trying to get to New York Pizzeria as fast as they can, they're going to use Pennsylvania. So let's, let's talk about making that, that approach there. And that's it for roads. I wanted to ask a question, since the original application, has the use of the nursery school changed? Okay. And would, would new bore samples be required? I feel like that question was asked of Andy two meetings ago when you weren't here, it was part of our notion of, does this really work with the new plan? But Jax raised that again, and I'm just wondering if, if there isn't an answer right now. I mean, does it require, since the buildings have changed, and it was sort of acknowledged at one point that maybe if drastic changes happen, it would need to be relooked at?
I think the only spot where you might go back to do additional borings is maybe under the apartment complex. If structural engineering deemed that the grid of borings that we did throughout the site, which is actually pretty extensive.
Right.
You're correct, that we did it under the roads, under the buildings, so we, we hit a lot of spots on here. A lot of projects even before they start, they'll just kind of do a grid and put borings wherever, and then they'll design based on that, because you can get a very good picture of the site, but you don't have to have a boring every single ten feet. So I feel like it's adequate, I'm not sure you're going to get much better information by, you know, sliding one over here and doing another boring, getting rigs out there. However, if something is necessary for a larger building, which maybe wasn't part of the original plan, then that might be something we could supplement it.
And that, but that would happen, Andy, just clarification for everybody who's not familiar with how construction works, is after approval, the project would go to, would text some engineers for design. They would actually do the analysis, do the math, do the extensive calculations, and at that point, they would make the call whether they thought more borings were necessary.
Okay.
If something can't build there, it just means, if the foundation has to change, you know, a different foundation than what's, you know, currently in the vision. So, it wouldn't prohibit the ability to put a, put a building there, it just might be more expensive.
Yeah, to stay at that, we also had comments on that as well, and I thought, you mentioned a good point. With the project change with apartment complex, the size of the building, the location of the building, from the original plan, which was going to be a wide area, to now it's going to have some impervious surface in that general location, that was an area that we identified that potential...
Might use me in that.
Additional boring test may be required. But as mentioned, it is typical that those, it's a requirement and ultimately a condition if it gets to that point, that it has to be done prior to issues of any permits for construction. And what they would do is they would test it, they would provide us the information to the village and to us, and then that information would determine what type of fire code and building materials would be required on that.
Okay, okay.
It was really, it was part of the building process.
Okay. I forgot to mention one other thing about the road, I have, I have some concern about the notion of it being a private drive and the limitation of emergency vehicle access, not in terms of the width of the road, but what the limitations are for use of a private drive versus a public road. And some of those points I need to actually clarify in my own mind, and maybe there are straight answers, but that was something that's been raised by some people, which again means, you know, if that changes with, with moving it to the north, does that also solve any of those tensions?
So, from our perspective, the only difference is who's responsible for...
Yeah, so I have to follow up, it was sort of just like, it limits our access, not in terms of space, but in terms, so, yeah.
I can just go for you, I got it out here.
Okay, let's, I'll talk to you after session, Mel.
I can read it, you said you looked for it straightforward, I can just read you the bill of law what it says.
No, let's, let's...
Why are we avoiding the big elephant room here?
No, it's not, it's not, because I'm not trying to open a giant can of worms of all of the legal questions that then could come up, especially...
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I appreciate it, and I, and I will happily hear that, is the board, right, the back to the... Now I got off the side, and I forgot the other thing. Okay, I'll wait, bring it back, John.
Well, a few things, starting with the road, I'm, I'm with everybody else who's here. I just see that as unworkable in its, in its location. That's the access to South Street as it's shown on that drawing over there. And we're talking about a 30-foot right-of-way versus a 70-foot clearance to South Street from the alternative location, to the north.
I just want to correct, so, 48-foot is the right-of-way at that project?
But isn't that 30 feet close, well, I happen to have a...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
I'm trying to add that.
You are good.
I think, isn't it 30 feet in there, and then it becomes 40 feet down there?
No, it's 48 foot straight across, the right-of-way for that. Actually, it's not straight across. Bring up some blowups, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I realize too.
The right-of-way thing is consistent. There's, yeah, it's 48.
And, and I'll ask the question, what is the nature of the right-of-way? Is it a utility right-of-way, or a road right-of-way, and who owns it?
So, it's a road right-of-way owned by, it's a parcel, actually, it's a parcel, part of the subdivision.
Plan block.
Right. And they, INHS will own it and be responsible for the team.
Okay, well then I will fall back on, I just don't like it.
That's fair.
But, because all the things that were said about this, I think, are true. A mulch walk going down there can't be maintained at night time, it's not going to be used at nighttime. It's, it's a, it's, it's the logical place for people coming from the center of Truantsburg to want to get access to this, this avenue. And just to show that there are some differences amongst ourselves, when this, this plan is awful.
I think that's what we heard.
I mean, it has the geometry, and I understand that, it's an easy-to-read geometry, it's very similar to what you see at Marchmont and so forth. But, what doesn't show up on the drawing very well is how it chops up property lines. And that would be all hedges and fences all over the place, and that what looks like a very nice quadrangle in here would, would really be, it would be a drainage area and a bunch of fences. So, and then, I mentioned to someone, well, we don't have any, this is a new form in Truantsburg, and she said, well, what about Salo Drive? Which is around, road surrounding buildings.
Well, things can develop this onto it too.
Anyway, so that was one thing. I would actually go a step further and, and talk about this, this road over here. And I disagree with Jessica on that one, because I think Pennsylvania Avenue is really a terrible walking road. And I think we should be discouraging people from going out to Pennsylvania Avenue. And I even was going through my head, can we make it one way, so that instead of it being the attractive, being what attracts traffic to it, it sort of discourages and encourages this accessway, which goes to a sidewalk and down to the bus station, or the bus stop, and so forth. So those were the things that, yeah, I, I, again, going back to this, this one here, I think the Willsees who live in that house there, when they bought the house, it's, my house is not too much further away from South Street than the Willsey house would be to that street. But, the Willsees bought the house, I bought the house knowing that my house was going to be next to the South Street, they bought their house being told that it's, it's not going to be developed. What was the, oh, oh, the other thing, we were talking about reducing the 50-foot setback, I'm all for that myself. And I think it doesn't necessarily have to happen with a variance, it could be done with a waiver for, and I don't know whether that gets into spot zoning, but I, I too think that the 50-foot setback, what's it, discourages the community feel.
Yeah, let's explore how that could be implemented, because I'm not sure how much I can do.
Well...
Tamara, if in Marchmont, you could, you know, have a 50-foot setback, if you don't have a... Well, it's, it's written into the... Right, the reality of it is, right, which is why we have the comp plan, zoning plan that's being happening, right?
So you could, you could kick that question to God.
Yeah.
From our perspective, we have to have a ZB for variance, you can't leave it that way.
That was...
That was...
That was...
But it could be, you know, a recommendation by the planning board, this is one we're
considering, that the idea, being that it's, if it makes sense for the board, for them to consider that, that could be something that could add some weight to that consideration for the process. There's, there's a lot of benefit to it, in the long term, insurance, utility, they should reduce it, they could cut back on the number of parking areas, it reduces the number of disturbance in terms of, they footprint to a much smaller footprint. So there's a number of variables that could be considered, as to why that could be beneficial.
I remembered my last thing, sorry. And then actually, it can't leave, I forgot it, Sarah Adams, because it pertained directly to your last comment about water, which is, so I've said this so many meetings in a row now, I live on a big street, and so what I found out, and I live at Nine Big Street, there's three houses, and then there's the church, then there's the village building. So, that neighborhood was very wet, but then, this new library was being built, and so the neighbors got together, before my time, and independently, as private owners, said, what could we do to tie in to this water system happening here, at our own expense, the villagers did it at their own expense, it was not a village project, to make the neighborhood better? I have a sump pump, but we all have dry yards, I have a dry sidewalk. So I'm sort of looking at the applicant, saying, what is there that should people in the neighborhoods around you be interested in? Is there a way they could tie in to your water mitigation system at whatever, presumably Is there a way they could tie in to your water mitigation system at whatever presumably their own expense? But again, as a benefit, since you're doing this project and we, we all exist here together, so let's exist here together. Let's explore that, okay.
What question, what did you say? Let me just add one other thing, the differentiation between this plan and this plan. This plan has 29 buildings in it and that plan has 19. And yes, there are two large buildings in the center, but that can be mitigated. So I'm just.
Yeah, more green spaces.
So some of the excess water on your street was absorbed by.
So they all tied in. So the houses, the private landowners and the village, the church consulted a contractor together. And they did an assessment of, this is what it will cost Nine Wig for you to make some drainage to tie in to the larger drainage practice that was happening for the library.
And what is the system that the library uses?
That I don't know, I don't know.
Because see, I think you're supposed to wear two ponds, which are the highest I've ever seen. No, I think it goes into Joel's, goes into Joel's backyard. Well, our ponds are looking a little bit strange. I've talked myself to death with permeable asphalt. I'm tired of it. Somebody served me something that looked a lot like that today, but I thought it was a crab chowder instead it was a horseshoe crab chowder. So I kind of keep my comments a little bit short. The one area that I haven't expanded on, hardly had a chance to talk about is that I feel that both the earlier one and the later one don't really, I hate that word, but I'll use it. Enhance, I hate that word. Don't really follow the comprehensive plan sufficiently that the citizens participated in writing their aspirations for the future of the city, what it should feel like, look like, the walkability, the trees, the architecture and so forth. I think it says a lot of in-depth, intelligent things. I think it might behooves to reread passages of it typically and see what could be applicable and what should be applicable. I tried, as you know, to get the city to clear historic district for the commercial park. I don't know if you guys are aware of how threatened our downtown buildings are, especially those in water now. But the brick buildings that we're all so proud of have a very lethal climate on this planet. They are disintegrating. Money has to go in here and do any historic district. That's how you get grants. I'm drifting a bit. I'm just trying to use the comprehensive plan and some of the very good and emotional things that it states as part of our thinking process. I don't think we should drift too far away from it. It has some very sort of undoable things, but it also has some very reasonable directions, aesthetically, architecturally, nature preservation and so forth. So, let's see, I, the, the center of this project has been described since I worked in architecture a lot and still do. People are calling it sort of a large motel in asphalt parking lot. So that's how I've heard it described. And then, of course, the, one thing John Alberg and I discussed together was the four cars. I still don't grasp that concept from the least. How are four cars going to move in and out from the parking space? Are these self-driving cars that just sort of decide to run later? I don't get it. So John came up with the idea of pushing the buildings back a bit and permitting, maybe a little bit of the driveway. Bringing the buildings forward and. Yeah, unfortunately, that's what I meant to say. And I've, I'm baffled enough since I've got to deal with distortion crap. Sorry.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Does anyone care from the board and they have that? Yeah?
What do you think about the road? The road, yeah. We don't like roads. I know you don't like roads, but given that we need, we need entrances here. I'm with, with some of your thinking on that. I think that's a biggie that we need to rethink and relook at and talk over. I agree that some of the directions we're, I do. And also, and that's a very strong point to make about the legalities. Got to make sure we get this straight. One, as long as we're carrying on a little.
Carry on.
One, one issue that I think really has to be addressed, and I'm still very fuzzy on how a nursery fits into all of this. And who does what, when, and at whose expense and on what schedule?
You mean in terms of the building phases?
Well, for example, the, the drawing shows a pull-off and parking lot for the nursery. But the nursery hasn't been designed yet. The money hasn't been raised for the nursery yet. Is this project going to buy that parking lot and access and build it before the nursery is in place or what? How's, how's that all meshed together? My, and I'll say what my solution is.
No, I didn't say the question.
Let us know if you want us to answer. We don't know, just let us know.
Oh, you can't, I mean, I think if you, do you want to hear if they haven't answered it?
Well, okay, yeah.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't build parking until the nursery school is ready to build their building and parking. That whole lot would be the nursery school. So when they build their building, they would build their parking.
Okay. So the design is not fixed. It would probably be designed when the building was designed, would it not?
Well, the location of the building and the parking you are approving as part of the site plan. Things could be tweaked when they went to get a building currently or they could come back and ask for an amendment that, you know, to move things. But really, this is, this is part of the overall site plan, what you see here.
You're approving essentially when, if that came to that point. You're approving the location, the building size, the parking area, everything that comes with it.
But not the use?
But the use still has to be, whether nursery or daycare, that terminology, I don't, I know that we're in that process, but it hasn't been determined to my knowledge. But the building itself and that location, the type of idea, what it will be, nursery or daycare, that's what it would be unless there was an amendment proposed by the applicant that says, we're no longer looking for that, we want to change it to something else. That would require them to spin an application to the notes and the notes to process it like they're doing now.
And I think to the, I asked a question about, has the use changed and hasn't? But is that, there is documentation from the states that charters the school? Is that a piece of paper that chartered the nursery schools and your state charters? Is that a document that exists? That's a document that exists! It's Christmas. Can that, can we, can we get access to that document? I think that will help in this, right? So here it is. If you're a restaurant and then you get a catering permit, are you suddenly a caterer and not a restaurant? If you're, is it a school? Is it like, let's, let's get clear on the.
So I think we're that same. We wouldn't provide, of course, any additional information you want. But I believe it was four or five meetings ago, Laura had asked an additional question that had something changed because of her support that the nursery school had submitted. So we said, all right, let's take a look at that. We took a look and we did a supplemental letter to Laura to say, here's the information. We don't think it changes the earlier analysis, but we're waiting for that information.
Okay. So, right, the appeal, as you know, there was a, some sort of appeal like before, right? And it's like, no, it's not, it's going to be a planning board. So here we are trying to get all of our good information so as a planning board you can make a determination.
And you should have copies of that.
We do, of the that, yeah. But not of this.
The license, the charter.
Right, that's again, this, this helps with the definition.
The nursery school's current?
Yeah.
I knew this yesterday, I forgot this today. I think you might think of wheelbarrow now with my reading material. Ten volumes of gum, duh. There is a legal issue, nursery and daycare. One needs one thing, one needs another, correct? That is going to be.
Yes, so that's the that. And again, so, so the kindergarten, and we can assess it at a different time.
One needs one kind of a.
That'll be a time to look at the zoning, but. Right.
So just so we're clear, if it's a, if it's a nursery school, it's allowed as a right. If it's a daycare, or I think it was, if it's a daycare, it needs a special use permit. Matt had determined that the, in February, as your zoning officer, that it was a, it did not require.
Right, because it's a school.
Right.
So versus someone who's not a school, not chartered, just opening a daycare.
So at this point, it's squarely in your zoning officer's court to make the difference. Show us.
She's listening. Thank you for taking your own time and not, those dollars. Okay. Okay.
Since we're asking questions to applicants to, so the affordable for sale, we haven't really focused very much on those. My memory is that there is some kind of different approach to property ownership on those particular parcels. And I'm pretty sure you did describe this at some point online. I've just forgotten how that is going to be set up and what it's going to look like when we get to a subdivision, you know, laying out the blocks and who owns what and who will own the land and who will own the properties.
So the subdivision would not change depending on ownership. So the subdivision that we presented a flat is, is what it is. There was a comment from the public that the market rate housing, the people in the market rate housing had to go to INHS to sell. That is not the case. We don't have anything to do with the market rate housing. So on the affordable for sale, INHS owns the land and we sell the house to the first-time homeowner. And so that person owns their house, they lease the land from us and they're responsible for maintaining the land typically or we enter into an agreement with them where we might maintain the land for them depending on.
So those are multi-unit places though, right?
Yep, so even if it's four units.
Sort of condominium ownership or what?
Nope, they, they own, it's like Philadelphia or where you have a party law agreement. It's like a row house basically. So each of these, if this is a for sale, this person owns their house, this person owns their house, this person owns their house, this person's on their.
And each one has a lease with INHS?
Yes, exactly.
Owns the actual.
Owns the. I have a question about that also. So there's a lot of concern, people have brought up storage areas for a lot of these dwellings.
Thank you.
So like, a lot of these, I haven't looked at it very closely. I'm not sure if it's, some of the affordable ones don't have garages. Is that the case or am I?
They don't have garages on this.
So. So that does, I mean, I think that it's fair to raise the case, like, okay, well, most people do have some area for storage. Where would you, where do you put your bike? If you, if like, just on your front porch, because where do you put your car at? Like, if you are an owner of an affordable home and you're leasing the property from INHS, could you build a storage shed or a garage on that property? Like, how does that work? Do you just go, would they go to you and say, hey, then you build a garage?
We would say, okay. We've also had several.
It does increase the family background.
That's right. It does actually, we have designed these for sale where actually it is bumped out in the back and that's actually an exterior storage area. At Holly Creek in the town of Ithaca, if you've ever driven up there, you know, it's like, you go take a look there, storage areas in the back. Also, I mean, here's, you aren't fully designed, this is sort of an example of this is an exterior storage area in the back of these. And they fit grills and people put bikes and, you know, picket cables and.
But people are allowed to use, you know, possibly use the property even though they're just facing it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And others responsible for maintaining it too. So it very much feels like they, they feel like.
Do we have copies of the lease that said, you know, leasing for the.
The ground? Can you have one? Sure. I don't think we've.
I'd like that. I'd like to.
We can definitely get your copy of the ground.
Yeah, so, and remember for the, for sales, they really are intended for first-time homeowners. So yes, as we get older, we accumulate stuff and we need bigger options. But in the early days, you know.
Unless those early days involve bees, they can make a lot of stuff.
Without a stuff.
Right, so we're talking about. You've been to my house, honestly? The cats have dogs. So, so, and again, why, why this is desirable? So a lot, some of us have, I've only ever rented in a city atmosphere, never owned in a city atmosphere. But the notion of why this would be attractive is I own my structure, I maintain my structure. I don't actually have to ask your permission, anyone's permission, to change anything within my interior walls except the codes officer who's also not here, saving us more money. Thank you.
Then you build equity.
But then you build equity. So the things that you do, so that then I can, I can recoup that when I sell it under the parameters of first time. Is there a stipulation or are there ways in which if you buy this, then you're required to meet something before you can sell it again?
Well, so you have to sell it again to another low or moderate income homeowner. So that basically it stays affordable in perpetuity rather than if we sell this house to 320,000.
And then you.
And you sold it a few years to 300,000.
And again, why that makes sense is I make $45,000 a year, $52,000, whatever, we can get to that too. I'd like to nail again what does affordable income mean so that we can help with that in perspective of, is it 45,000? It might not be. So, but then say I improve my life and I'd like to sell this because now I want to move to a different place or buy a bigger house. Then I can recoup what I put in perhaps more if I build equity, but still providing, okay.
So you do build equity.
I already have a house.
You do build equity and you get credits for improvements, if you do capital improvements. So you can actually sell your house for more if you, you.
But there's still thresholds because it needs to be maintained as affordable.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Oh, I wanted to make one other comment that hopefully won't make Guy cringe when someone repeats it to him later. But I just wanted to reiterate that as a board, none of us are supposed to have our mind made up already. Period. We are still in review process. It would be 100% inappropriate for us, having not together reviewed all of these things, to not be open-minded, to be sitting here all ready for or against something. Just saying that out loud for everyone's clarification. Okay. All right, anything else?
It made a word, right?
I was going to yawn and I was so, she turned my face just as I was going down.
So maybe we talked about where we go from here, but Julie's.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a little bit before we left so that, because we're going to go back and think about all this. You know, obviously we've heard some consensus, there's some consensus, unfortunately, we're going to hear that this is a more interesting plan. I don't know if we got Jessica's exact take on which one.
I do think it's more interesting and I have some small concern about pocket neighborhoods, which I think might be addressed as we get to look at setbacks and what that means. But I like, right, the green spaces maximize. Also that it pulled it in away from the boundaries of other neighbors, providing then more green space between them.
Can I make a comment on that? To John, actually. I don't, I don't have, I think it's great that commences the project to 19 parcels rather than 29. I don't, I don't mind. Like, I think the design of that large building, you know, if you have to have a large building, I think it's interesting. I think that just, so, so I mean, I don't have anything against, you know, larger buildings per se. I just think that the.
So it sounds, and this is sort of where I was going with this is, it seems like this is a lot of the confusion. These two roads, is it that or is it sort of, it seemed like you were sort of pointing to these as roads?
Slash parking lots.
Slash parking lots.
Well, right, so like, what is it?
They are really.
It's just confusing.
They are really meant to be parking lots because of the amount of.
But people are going to use, if there is a road, people will use.
Yeah, and, and really what's driving that is the number of.
Can we get a lot of your publics? Can we keep it quiet in our audience, please? Thank you, thank you.
Really, what's driving that is the amount of parking that is required under the codes. So, you know, in order, if, if one of these was to go away, let's say you want, you got this one go away and you look this up, you can make this one a little bigger, but you, you know, unless we were able to get a variance for parking, you have to have this many spaces. So the question for us is sort of how do you get them all on there and in some way make it feel.
Yeah, I mean, like, what if, what if you could do something like, if the variances were condensed and the buildings could be put closer together? and the buildings could be put closer together, like, could, one of the things I don't like about this plan is that there's parking in front of these large buildings, in front and behind.
Right.
On that side. And it's, it's an island, it's a strange thing, it does not feel like smooth and it doesn't feel like this. So if things were condensed, could you put parking behind it?
The alternative would be a much larger, potentially larger parking lot in the back of, you know, parking lot.
Right, so then the whole, the whole front side would be, would be closer to the homes on the other side of the road. It would feel more like a neighborhood, it would be more, you know, conducive to mixing of incomes. You know, it wouldn't feel so segregated like it is right now.
Oh, Adam, can I give you a short answer? One of the very first meetings we had on this, the public that participated mentioned over and over again, think of clustering some of this more.
Right.
Tighter construction method with, that opens up the land a little bit more. And that never, we never did get any clustering per se.
I think the pocket neighborhoods might have tried to answer that.
And one other question, and possibly there's no answer to this one.
There's always.
What does the, okay. Given you went over to from vinyl to cement board on the exterior, is that still true?
I think we're looking at it, yeah.
Cement, you're looking at it, but it's not been resolved yet.
We haven't gotten to material.
Let me ask a ballpark, what is the life expectancy of one of these houses?
Oh, the life expectancy of a.
Given what, what construction materials you use and techniques you use, maybe you could ask your.
Fifty to a hundred years.
Architectural, hundred years, nothing in America that's been built recently has lasted.
I mean. My, my house, my house in downtown Ithaca is about a hundred years old and it's wood frame construction and it had cedar siding that's been covered in vinyl and, and these are very similar materials.
Oh, your framing would be very different, those would not be PT or whatever we used to pressure treat it. No, I don't think what, how we build today is, nothing lasts, it's not even economically the viewpoint.
Yeah, I, I don't agree.
Economic viewpoint is to sell it.
I don't, you know, the energy code, the energy code is requiring tighter envelopes. So I think you're getting less moisture penetration in wood buildings are, are long lasting. Sorry, go ahead, Adam.
No, I was just going to say, so, the, the thing I would say that is differentiated, that what we do, what we, INHS does is, this is not a developer who's looking to build something cheap, sell it and walk away. And we're done. This is a developer who provides affordable housing, who has to maintain these units forever, right? That's their, that's their charge. So the maintenance level on these is, if you, and I'm going to encourage people, I said it before, I'll say it again, go look at INHS, affordable housing in Ithaca.
I did.
I have as well.
I did.
I'm, I'm going to say, maybe you disagree, but I'm going to say, I think they do a fantastic job of maintaining the property. They do an excellent job with their tenants and I'm, I'm very, very excited to be working for this particular client because they do an excellent job.
I was just down there recently and we talked to a few of the people that own some of those places across from the big one. Where's it called? My old neighborhood. They're pressure treated, that was used for the steps and some of the decking here and there. It's already cupping, started to curve up, opening up the cracks. They make, I called a couple of the lumber yards just to find out how expensive it is. But the extruded plastics that come in good colors, they really do last a long time, easy to install. And so I, I walk around there often, I used to live there, you know, it's sort of, I have a little nostalgia to that neighborhood. But I am not seeing buildings that are going to, not, your prediction is too optimistic.
But I think the applicants now hearing there are the one first detailed descriptions of building materials.
And you're going to be around.
Including insulation, including on my mind, there was insulation on interior walls for the shared property. There's been some comment from the public about their experiences in Juniper.
Oh, between units, yeah, yeah, we're doing a much better, so Juniper was built in the eighties and we're doing a much, much better job these days and making sure there's sound attenuation and paying very specific attention to both, sound attenuation above, below, you know, hard to building as well as on your setup.
I thought one of the things, which is, and maybe it's in there, but I know we discussed it at one point, I can't remember if there's a plan for the superintendent to live on Saturday. Is that absolutely non-negotiable? I mean, I think we've seen, we should maybe, maybe talk about that.
We can talk about it, we have not found people who really want to live in the place where they work.
Right.
That's the hard thing.
So we just also have this study that says, sort of works better, like, it feels like the people there have access to their, and there's this watchfulness, there's this safety, there's this continuity, but it's the same thing, right? I think the city made, city police live within limits and then I think they need to change that. So it's difficult to live where you want.
I mean, you know, it's something we could talk about internally and say, do we think we could find somebody who was interested?
I think in terms of addressing crime and all of that, it's something to consider.
What we found is, like at Juniper, we have a maintenance person who's there, you know, five days a week and a maintenance key does not live there, on call twenty four seven. We have a management person who's there five days a week, so you've got two people over there and really available almost all the time.
Okay.
You know, they live in the community, they might not live in the building, but they live in a close radius and they become part of, you know, the family of people on the neighborhood.
Okay.
Cool. Right, so you've each given us comments to think about. The only one I kind of want to further up on is feeling that this was a sudden change and I guess I just want to highlight that it wasn't, there wasn't a casual change. It wasn't just the dialogue we had with the board and there were a number of comments from, to, you know, respecting the layout of the land, trying to cluster. So this compared to that is a dramatically clustered, different design. It tours most of the building inside. It's not a true cluster in the sense of cluster subdivision, but it's a clustered concept. And then those neighborhood pockets, the idea was again, bring in, preserve the open space. So it's the cluster principle without being a cluster subdivision. The, but one of the main guides, you know, guides behind this though, really was the respecting the layout of the land and trying to minimize the cut and the fill and the way you have to move things and just respecting the terrain because it also improves stormwater controls when you're respecting how the water flows and kind of catching it at the bottom. So there were a lot of issues that went into the, the design and it is a little different, but we do, we do like it a lot. There were a lot of issues you all raised. Every one, from what I heard, will be covered by the list we discussed. So at this point, I would say we've got a really good list to go issue by issue. As I said, our plan for this, for next month would be to think about it, everything you said, then come back and hit items one at a time, systematically go through. And if the board wants to see a change, we would look for you as a group to direct us to make a change. It would be logged and we would keep going. And then, once we have a complete list of requested changes from the board's perspective, we will come back with review revised plans.
So I think that that list, Adam, hits what we talked about at the work session, summed up for Vicki who was unable to attend. So it's the cover, right, the first, first nine items on the recent, so I think you're all looking at it. So can we agree as a board that we'd like to move forward in that chronological sort of review so we can collect our thoughts about, one, road design access points and have some consultation with our experts and our officers to address that as the first topic?
I just have that list that we compiled from the last meeting of some of the issues that we wanted to.
The specifics within these larger categories?
I just want to make sure, you know, that we're not going off of just the categories that are provided, that we make sure that.
No, I can tell you that these hit all of our major categories.
So one list that only covers their last report?
Yep, but I will, I don't have that last conversation in front of us, but let me see if there was something that was separate that didn't get. For example, and then remember we said, well, that could be talked about at this time or at that time. So the school, the nursery school is, where exactly within that would we talk about these nine? So there might be then this miscellaneous or this other thing and let's look at that list.
Yeah, let's just make sure, I mean, maybe we can, if anyone thinks of anything or would like to change this at all, we email it and then we can.
But at least for the, okay, so at least for the purposes of this, of this thing, recognizing that these topics are not being handed to us and we're following someone else's protocol with our ideas that we've already talked about, you come out, listen to the audio from the last meeting, I play along the recorder, sorry. We could start with road design so that we can gather our thoughts for the next meeting. And then if we look at it and say, okay, also, and then we'll try to hit parking and impervious surfaces at the same time and not try to just be, and then, hey, as a backup, can we talk about pedestrians? Because they kind of all were made and we can then be focused.
I think that would make a lot of sense and when, we're certainly not trying to drive the process, we're trying to organize it and understand that the list is going to change as we go into it because new issues are going to pop up.
Well, and I also appreciate that those are the hot button topics on everyone's mind. Lightways, pedestrians and stormwater management. So, and that's part of, so that's a good question. I'm encouraging your bad behavior, Miss Carrie, by acknowledging it. But that's a good question, is that, is lighting part of architecture? Is, I would say yes, so that's one, and you don't have that list in front of you right now. So do we address the school as part of architecture program? Right, yes, so lighting is definitely a hot topic. But as much as we can and have been doing, we can address the agenda well in advance for people to also have their own comments ready for that meeting. Oh, yeah.
I have just one question. I would like to suggest that we, at the end of each meeting, in our, the next meetings that we have from here on out, to have put our public, public comment period, like a public.
Yeah, yeah, oh, great.
And re-execute that three minutes at the end of each meeting.
So, okay, so this is a great time to talk about that and Adam, did you have more?
No.
So the village has done this interesting idea with the board trustees where it's not so much limited to three minutes a person, it is you have fifteen, twenty, twenty five, half hour. Speaks to speaking and then it's sort of, instead of us feeling like we're the timekeepers and you.
But we need to be careful because that's a public comment and when we get to public hearing, that's very different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to make sure that we're not.
No, that's very clear, yeah. So I don't know if you want.
That's fine, I just want to make sure that the public knows, I would like to involve them freely.
Yeah, again, that's a comment period, we did have. For, I think, is she, all of us are on the same page?
Yeah, I think we're all on the same.
I think, but that's not a thing too.
Please, yeah.
This was, it's been very routine, involved publicly, that's a discretion in matter and we have consistently, you know, for a long, long time, for the vast majority of this project. And, you know, so it's not really a change.
No, but I just, I mean.
But we have, we've also had meetings where, you know, we feel like we want to really focus the board on.
I just want people to know that we will continue to hear their voices.
I hear what you're saying, so I think.
It'll probably be like a regular.
And what Rick's saying is don't commit to saying every single meeting, always do that, but let them know that we.
But I think the overall tenor has always been, you know, we, gosh, you know, we've gotten some great input. We've gotten questions ready that we now are going to track down and that's the whole point and we want to keep doing it.
Yeah. And I'd like to add, and then it fuels the questions.
You know, some of us work quite a bit, we have to absorb tremendous amount of material. I, I didn't have a chance to look this over thoroughly or read it, I only got it a very short time ago and it was, it came out, I don't know what happened to it, thirteenth of November.
The snowstorm. So it's. It came in last Tuesday, the day after.
Just so we're clear, everything in there you already.
Yeah, I was actually going to say that, Adam, thank you.
So there's nothing.
Yeah, so, so actually, so.
That, but I had to read that to find that out because I've seen the old plans and I said, oh, they look back.
Just so that, as we move forward.
Yes, comparison, I, I get it, yes. And then I folded up in such a way, John is jealous as mine is a high point speaker.
Okay, so I feel like we just covered updates from the applicant pretty well. Do you want, do you want to hold business? Should we have any old business?
Don't need a problem.
Yeah, the old business, I think would be, let's get those minutes.
I'll be ninety ten before I leave.
Nice meeting. And new business, do you want to talk about the stop sign or door seat?
Already talked to, talked to the mayor about it, he's, I think, considering. It's very dangerous and, okay, two, three solutions, one was used for the road, wasn't very effective, the stop sign.
We don't want to hear all that. No, what's the proposal?
Oh, the proposal, it's a very dangerous intersection.
Okay, so what's, what's the proposal?
The proposal is to make it less dangerous.
To move the yield sign.
By, by putting a stop sign on the lower road, a lake.
Because right now it's a hill, so.
We, we can't, I take that road a lot, Dorsey, it's very steep. No, there's, there, no.
There's one that comes by the plan at the top of the farm, there should be one.
Exactly. When I take that road, when I go down Dorsey, I'm halfway in the road in one of these days, so we, you know, we get clipped. There, there is, there's three, there is one stop sign, yes.
So you're talking about the main street.
Yes, the stop sign is only on the side, the lower lead, the road is nothing and they come around it very fast. We come up Dorsey very fast.
There's two roads there, right?
Later on, it's one road this way and Dorsey connects, so it makes a T, a T shape.
So there's a stop sign on one.
And one has this corner that's more east, that's a stop sign.
Three stop signs?
No, we want somebody to come around, the most dangerous one is coming around that corner, they should probably have the right of way. Or what the mayor suggested was a different idea.
We need to flip chairs.
I think it's like, something to go right past around some corners.
The mayor suggested scraping, that's private property, isn't likely issues, but scraping the earth and soil, that corner back of it. It's full of vegetation, it was cut once, it was better. However, to go to the homeowner and say, yeah, we want to take two or three feet off your soil, isn't going to work too well.
Yeah, they've tried that.
They've tried, yeah, but at least if they keep it short, now that could be something to do. But so we're thinking about it, maybe we should talk about it. I could bring it up.
As I'm having a hard time getting, where do you have a stop sign?
They used to be what?
Because they're not my company. I can down my road with my kids and a teacher spoke in my car coming back from ice skating. A guy came up and slipped right into me on the side of my, I'm actually sure.
So let's investigate that.
It's a dangerous turn, I'll bring a, a plan in that shows you exactly.
The public is totally welcome to take their conversations outside if they'd like, since maybe some of your interests have already been addressed. Do we have any other new business? Somewhere in the back of my mind, by the way, and we don't have to talk about now, is that enforcing the parking on Main Street, which is significant and it's good to enforce what you have, do we have enough municipal parking for people to live on? Or do we need to think about that? I don't know that it's super pressing now, but I have heard from the community that lives on Main Street, that, you know, where is that going to be? And I'm not clear if that's a PPW issue or is it a planning board issue or.
It's not, I'm here to New York State Department.
No, for municipal parking, like, what, what is a village, do we do on the right?
Oh, to take the car off Main Street.
Yeah, for the people living in apartments on Main Street. So now we can ask the trustees to zone me. So that's, okay. Welcome.
I love something, at our lab, at our working session, too, we talked about the strength that we thought we gained by having a village plan.
Yes. I didn't write that, I had a conversation, but I need to write that and I said, and I didn't, I apologize. So lots of materials to read and, and I will do that and I'll include all of this so we can see that acknowledgement that we would like to investigate having a planner. Okay, yeah. I don't have any sense, by the way, in the conversation I have that, that has traction or doesn't have traction, it was just observed, so, yeah. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for a adjourn?